This is a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.
Good evening and welcome to the Brighton Central School District Board of Education Business Meeting and Budget Review on March 8, 2022. I'm sitting in for Larry Davis tonight, and bear with me because I think I've done this only once before, so be kind. I want to call this meeting to order. Do I need to take a motion? And our first order of business is public participation. And before we start public participation, I'm going to read the same comments that Larry always starts our meeting with. Public participation is an opportunity for the Board of Education and district leadership to receive feedback from the community. We allocate three minutes per speaker in order to give everyone a chance to speak while also letting the board conduct and complete business on the night's agenda. Over the last few meetings, we've tried to be as flexible and respectful as possible to speakers. However, three minutes has morphed into four, which has turned into five. So we will have an alarm up here that will sound at the three-minute mark, and comments should conclude at that point. I will also note that whether directly or indirectly, our students are watching all the time. We consistently state that personal attacks or denigration will not be allowed towards anyone. You can provide your feedback or state your disagreement with policies or practices without attacking a person's character. Dan Goldman, thank you for raising your hand, is in the room. You can hand him an index card with your intent to speak. It needs to have your name and town where you live. For security reasons, you do not need to write or state your street address. Is there anybody? Dan, have you heard from anybody?
I have not. Is anybody here?
All right. Is there anybody who wanted to speak? Well, then, we're going to move along. And could I ask for a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Andrea?
Second.
Sue, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Next thing we're going to do is approve the minutes from our February 15, 2022 Business Meeting. Does anybody have any comments or questions about that? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next on our agenda, we're going to have a budget review. Dr. McGowan and Lou Alimo are going to present that information to us now.
Thank you very much. This should be relatively brief as it is an update, and not a ton has changed since the last time that we presented to you or the community forum. Just a broad overview, again, our estimated revenues. Important to point out the difference in revenues, but the impact on spending in the far-right-hand column. The most notable numbers, up 21% is investment income. It's important to point out, though, that's only $2,200, so that doesn't, in our districts, have a big impact. We do have relatively small amounts of money that are listed in certain places and invested, but that's -- districts are really limited in that. We don't have cash on hand like a business, but we do point that out as a difference. Our rental for real property, we're budgeting to go down. Again, that's the Brookside rentals that would be changing as we transition that property, planning for that in the new year. But state and federal aid, up a total of 14%. Refunds recoveries up 7%. That proportion to spending, though, is what we point out, which means it could allow for 3.5% of additional spending. So when you combine that with the allowable growth in the tax levy, what that provides, you get the total amount that, within the levy and from the revenues we expect, we can look at in terms of new spending, what it would allow for before we'd have to talk about either going over the cap, which we will not be doing, or making reductions, which we are also planning to not be doing. So the total for that, when you look at all of the amounts, the planned potential, if you're at the cap number of 2.1%, overall, you're looking at a potential spending increase from those revenues of 5.3%. The rollover in anticipated expenses right now exceed that number, so the point is, you have to reduce that amount of proposed spending to match the revenues so that we don't have to go over the cap. And again, doing that without cutting program is what the challenge is right now. The property tax cap calculation, which we have gone through with you previously, is a formula developed by the state that gets us all the way down to that number on the bottom of 2.12%, our cap number. Really important to remember, because you see different cap numbers in every single district throughout the county. Some are as high as over 4% this year, and some are lower than ours. It is not a 2% property tax cap. It never was a 2% property tax cap. It was 2% or the rate of inflation or Consumer Price Index. As part of the formula, we're actually running much higher than that, but the lower number, which has been difficult in years past. Districts have said, you know, it shouldn't be the Consumer Price Index or the rate of inflation. When it's under 2%, we should be able to be at at least 2. We would say at this point, when our costs are going up based on inflation far higher than 2%, that the higher number would be a better, more accurate number to use for districts. But regardless, this isn't about the tax cap tonight. Our number is 2.12%, which would allow for an increase in spending of 1.37%. Really important to think, though, about tax rates and how this works, just to lay out for people, because we want to talk about equalization and how it works between towns and what the impact of property wealth in the community is on the tax rate. You're responsible for setting the tax levy. So as a board, you typically adopt that in August. You adopt that in August because we have gotten the taxable valuations of the community that's administered by the towns. So the assessor gives us the tax rolls and says, "All the property in town is worth this amount of money." The definition of the word levy is how much do you need to collect? How much do you need to levy? And that's based on the total property wealth in the town, and it's divided up for every individual taxpayer. That's the rate, based on the value of the property that they own. The equalization rate is New York State's measure of the municipality's level of assessment, so how the municipality is assessing their properties, and how close that assessment is to the actual value. So in other words, the Division of Real Property Tax, the state analyzes how close the assessor is to what they believe the actual value is, and it is designed to make sure that owners of properties with similar full-market value pay an equivalent amount of taxes from town to town, from municipality to municipality, so that it is not so far off from one assessment to another. The tax rate equals the tax levy divided by the taxable value times 1,000. That's just the formula for it. So what does that mean for us, and what are the impact on tax rates and equalization? Who do you want to come up and dig into that for everybody?
We wanted to throw these couple of slides in here this evening just because the equalization rate has changed. In last year, when it dropped in the town of Pittsburgh, it caused a disproportionate increase in their tax rate that the homes in the Pittsburgh community were concerned about, and we issued a letter to try to explain it. This year, we'd like to try to get ahead of that a little bit and for the whole community to understand how that impacts the budget process. So what I have here is the calculations. So over here is the number. Aside from the board, the board, as Dr. McGowan said, establishes the levy. That's the amount of money used to balance our budget. The tax rate, then, is computed using this formula, starting with the assessed valuation that's administered by the town. So the Brighton Central School District is made up of two towns, Brighton and Pittsburgh. So in the current year, we have about $2.1 billion of assessed valuation, $30 million for Pittsburgh. We look at, then, the equalization rate, and so to determine what portion is allocated to the different towns, we have to look at the true valuation, and that's what Dr. McGowan was saying, is fair equals the playing field for the different towns. So you can see, this is divided by that, and then the total is the percentage that's allocated by the levy. So last year, this is our levy, $56.7 million, and the resulting tax rate for the towns. So because of this 95% equalization rate and the 91% equalization rate, you have a difference in the resulting tax rates. Brighton's at 26.54, and the town of Pittsburgh, within the Brighton Central School District, is at 27.72. So I just wanted to illustrate what's happening this year, because as the housing market continues to increase and housing prices increase, without the reassessments town-wide, the equalization rate is declining. So for the town of Brighton, it's declined to 89%, and for the town of Pittsburgh, it's 82%. So again, we go through an illustration if there was no increase, no appreciation in the tax base, but just the state's grading of the assessors' rates or the assessments at this point in time. So again, we look at the full value and then the resulting percentages that are allocated to each town. So again, no change, they're assuming no increase in tax levy, no increase in appreciation of the tax base. Just the shift in the equalization rates from 95 and 91 respectively to 89 and 82 shifts the amount of money that's allocated to the different towns within the school district. So just that factor alone lowers the town of Brighton's tax rate and increases the town of Pittsburgh's tax rate, increasing it 3.9%. And that's before any decision is made on the budget, just from the shift in how the tax is allocated between the two towns. So what's that mean for an average home assessed value at $250,000? Brighton homes, homes located in the town of Brighton would decrease about $4, and the homes in the town of Pittsburgh, again, all within the Brighton Central School District, would increase $271, just from that change in the equalization rates. So in the next slide, the impact on the budget. So again, we have the current year as the base with the equalization rates and the resulting tax rates. And now, if the tax levy is to grow at the tax levy limit, and there's the change in the equalization rate, so now we have the compounding impact of change in equalization and an increase in the amount of money that we're asking for the community for. You could see what the percentages don't change from the previous slide, but the amount of money that we're increasing is about $1.2 million. That's what's generated from the tax levy limit. And then you see the resulting impact of the tax rates, and this is before any change in exemptions or reassessments or anything like that. This is just those two factors. Homes in the town of Brighton would go up about 2%, and homes in the town of Pittsburgh would go up just over 6%. So it's just important to understand when we're talking about the tax levy, and that's what the Board of Education is responsible for, and that's the number that we're managing our budget. The amount that it actually, that people will pay in their tax bill resulting from that is beyond the board's control because of these two factors, the assessed valuation and the equalization rate.
Do you know about how many homeowners are affected by this? Who live within the town of Pittsburgh but attend Brighton schools?
If I think about that mailing, I want to say it was 80 or 90 homes.
Okay. Thanks.
So that's just the technical part that we wanted to try to get ahead of and try to explain. And last year, we did a letter to the Pittsburgh community after the tax rates were adopted, trying to explain this. So it's something we may want to think about of how to communicate that so people are aware of that dynamic and what's at stake from the school budget development process. Back to Dr. McGowan.
So, you know, just to reiterate, sometimes it's dangerous, but my thinking out loud, so Lou does a tremendous job explaining this and explaining it to me very thoughtfully. I look at this and I think, okay, so what this is saying to me is that the assessor in Brighton gets it closer to what the state would agree with, 95% versus the assessor in Pittsburgh. No offense to that person, it's just this happens all over the place, right? So it has to be equalized. So there was already a difference between the two that had to be made up. That difference has expanded a little bit, but what's really interesting about this is when people talk about the real estate market is on fire, values are way up, look at what I'm getting for my home, whenever you see a listing in your neighborhood, you're like, holy cow. Well, what that does, it's great. Overall, property value's going up for people. It's super. What it does in a couple ways is, one, then the value goes up, which means your rate per thousand goes up. We're not collecting anymore overall. The levy is the levy, but the person who is paying the higher value for the home, so the person coming in paying that, is actually probably paying more than the person who hasn't had their home reassessed in a while. But because those values have gone up, the state's now saying, yeah, you're only like 89% of the way there, not 95%, because the values have gone up and you're not matching the value to what the assessment is. And then how that spells out and the difference for the rate really makes a difference. So I'm glad that, you know, we get that word out, lose, absolutely right. We need to think about a way to make sure we explain that to people. It's not a simple concept. The spending pressure versus revenue growth is something for us to consider, too. If you just look, then, at our revenues next year, projected, both foundation aid and tax levy, $2.8 million in foundation aid and tax levy. I'll say this a couple times tonight, we'll keep reinforcing this. Yes, foundation is going up, and that's great, something that we've talked about for many, many years in this room. Super. It's at 80%, 80%. So imagine next year, if your household finances were set up on 100% of your salary and you found out you were going to get 80% of it, it makes a big difference. So for us going forward, we continue to make sure people understand, it is 20% less than what it should be, so we're not at a point yet where we can say, great, we've restored full funding, fantastic. There are tremendous pressures on that, especially when you're 20% less than where you should be. And then the spending pressures don't go away, and in fact, they've increased. So the same spending pressures that people are seeing at home and the challenges economically people are having, and that's, you know, I think we're terrified, too, as we see the cost of fuel go up, for one. That has an impact on the work that we're doing. We're looking at a variety of increases that we have to account for. Hourly wage adjustment, contractual salary increases, and how those roll over, new positions that we have budgeted for and that we're making sure we budget for appropriately relative to federal funds that are supporting some of those, health insurance increase, BOSI's placements for students who need those particular placements, that's mandated programming, that those aren't choices. Contract transportation, which is, as you explained in a recent budget forum, our contracts allow for you to just increase based on CPI, the Consumer Price Index, and that allows you, in the eyes of the state, to renew those contracts with your transportation providers. Well, that's great when CPI was low. So those contracts went up very little year to year to year. When they're low, we could renew those with the companies. Your option is to go out to bid for transportation. Given the current environment, the labor market environment, the fuel environment, going out to bid would probably be disastrous. So you are stuck with that increase of Consumer Price Index, and when it's so high right now, that's the impact on the cost. In addition to the fact that those placements we're talking about, when we send students to placements, that is an additional transportation cost as well, and we've got several that we have to budget for going into next year. And then we continue to budget also for technology, but cybersecurity more than anything, which really protects the district. I think people are well aware now of the need to invest in that infrastructure to protect the organization. So the preliminary budget and how that breaks down, very briefly, we're looking at a rollover of $6.9 million rollover, so to speak, also rollover planning on what the potential spending could be. That's 7.9%. Remember, we combined those two revenue sources, both foundation aid, the aid increase and the potential levy increase, would allow for far less than that. And so it's how do you get that down, then, that potential spending, down to a place that matches that if you're going to be at the cap, which I want to keep saying, we will be at the cap, we will not be over the cap, is probably the best way to say, we will not go over the cap, and we will not be cutting program. That's our intent. So it's how do you whittle away at that over time, which is what we're working on. Anticipating salaries and wages up 8.7%, not because we will be agreeing to an 8.7% increase for each individual. The overall cost, the overall pot of salary money, because you're bringing new people on, will go up 8.7% also because of what will be contractual increases. Employee benefits, which includes the health insurance increases, BOSI's costs up 12.2%. Again, accounting for those additional placements. Supply services up 12.7%, still a relatively small dollar amount, but up 12.7%, and debt transfer up just half a percent. Remember, we did the thought exchange, had 600 participants, a pretty significant number, who gave us a lot of really good feedback in terms of what we should be thinking about in the budget process. And our conclusions that we presented over the last couple of meetings, maintaining programs is a priority for the community. Clearly, we saw that in thought after thought, comment after comment. Academic excellence continues to be a priority. Continuing to build programs and innovate is essential to our stakeholders. Cost is an important consideration. Tax impact must be considered. There were a number of comments that said, "I want more programs, I want more innovation, I want academic excellence, and I do not want to spend more on it." Fair point. Almost impossible to balance those two things at the same time, but we recognize that. That's what people are saying. It's expensive, and I'd rather not get more expensive, but I also want great programs for my kids, and so finding the right balance is what we're up to. Our community supports thoughtful investment that is focused on student impact. That was clear over and over and over again in the exchange. Capital project planning. Lou, are you going to elaborate on this as well?
Just a couple of talking points here. We mentioned this in previous. We've seen the history, we've talked about the history, and as part of the 2017 Capital Improvement Plan, Dr. McGowan always uses the analogy, building in that car payment. We have done that over the last couple of years. We have stability now in our investment in our facilities over the next couple of years. But the Board of Education, over these next, really, this next year, will have an opportunity to look at the potential for reinvestment. This drop-off here in the debt service, if it was to be reinvested to maintain the same percentage of the levy used for investment in our facilities, this equates to about a $20 million capital project. So something that we'll be talking about and strategically planning about reinvestment in that, and it's about $20 million. If we want to leverage reserves, it could be greater impact program. But that's essentially what this slide is telling us, is showing what our outgoing debt service is, the building aid that's supporting it, and how we can maintain continuity on the air stability, excuse me, in the tax levy.
The beginning of that, remember, we talked a lot about how there were program reinvestments over time when debt service was falling off. So when we paid off our car, we took that debt service and put it towards program. That's the beginning of the graph, the 1920 area, that was where we started to have this really serious conversation, and Lou did such a great job of outlining over time where we needed to be. That could drop off again as some of that debt is paid, and the point would be, keep that car payment in so we can keep reinvesting in our facilities. Really, really important. So the capital project planning, what are we looking at? This would be coming up right now. Current balance in the building reserve is $6.5 million, so that's where we'd be talking about drawing from for the local share. Target project budget would be $7.2 million. This is for this year. So in this year's referendum, we would be asking the community for permission to do this. The financing that we would suggest or propose would be bonds of $4.8 million, so taking on that debt and using from the capital reserve $2.4 million to pay that local share. So in other words, not adding a new tax burden for our community, but rather paying that out of reserves. That's why you put that aside, but being able to reinvest in our facilities. These aren't really fancy things, though, we're talking about, and that's tricky because people like to also see the beautiful work accounts are on, the beautiful work in the auditorium, the science classrooms, the new seating at French Road, which is in and looks just fantastic. All of those things are really having an impact on program throughout the district, but these are very important, just like in your household, capital management, so to speak. Like, taking care of these things saves you a lot of money in the long term, it keeps your property where it should be. At French Road, replacing the gym floor is very important. If you've spent any time playing basketball there, you slide all over the place, it really needs to be replaced at this point. A new cooling tower, playgrounds, actually, at French Road, and that is something tangible that people will see, but our playgrounds are both due to be replaced but also need to be more accessible for all kids, and we recognize that and planning for new playgrounds. And then sight lighting also at French Road. And at the middle school, boiler replacement, domestic hot water boiler replacement and HVAC controls, and at the high school, replacing the gym floor and bleachers, renovation and rehabilitation of the main gym, and roof replacement, the all lower roof. And we need reauthorization of 21, 22 work that hasn't been able to be done yet. The community has to reauthorize that as well as part of the process. And a lot of that is just the time it takes, primarily for state ed to approve plans and for us to be able to do that. The community considerations, we just want to keep reminding people for you to think about in this process, the impact of funding, right? So we're not there yet. I've said this before, we are 20% less than where we should be. We've made tremendous gains. Fight for Brighton was such a big part of that. Many people in the district, all of you as a school board, our legislators, Jeremy Cooney and Sarah Clark were incredible in this process, and before them, Joe Morelli certainly and Joe Robach participated quite a bit in these debates and discussions, and we appreciate that. The impact of inflation, I think, is important to keep in mind as well, so I mentioned that Consumer Price Index. Our costs are going up. So, one, the impact of inflation on households that then would be paying this cost, we understand that, but also the impact of inflation on our work here, whether that's materials and building supplies that will be purchased and the cost of those projects, fuel, transportation, our utilities, everything, we're paying that same cost as well. Impact of COVID and all of the types of things we're trying to look at differently, and we don't really love the term learning loss, but rather, how do you make up for over time all that kids have experienced? Learning loss is tricky, would indicate somehow that somebody wasn't doing something for kids, but there is a gap, we know, from where we were and where we are, and how do you put programs in place that help support not just academic needs, but mental health, social, emotional learning as well. The impact of today's decisions on the next several years, so as we're hiring for new positions, looking at the federal funds, when you're bringing new people on and those federal funds will run out, what happens when those funds run out? And how do you budget for those if they are in need? And be thoughtful about that so that there's not a cliff without funding to support them, and also so that if those are in need, you don't have to cut those positions. And that, the impact of those things and understanding that now, it really has a big impact on future budgets. And then the impact of the tax increase on households. And we recognize that we would all, and all of us, myself included, are paying the tax increase, would rather that there never be an increase. And the impact on the household budget that it has is important for us to always remember. On programs, I mentioned to you before, the goal to be under the cap and not cut program, because we recognize how important that is to our kids and our community and the work that we're doing here and the great results that we are achieving. They're relative to other cost increases of a tax increase, right? So, you know, really being thoughtful and in this community conversation about helping people to understand, if you're seeing a huge increase in the cost of milk, for example, when you go to Wegmans, or fuel when you go to the pump, we're experiencing that same thing, too, and it is reasonable to think that there has to be some kind of increase here in order to pay for that if we want to continue to have programs, and communicating that clearly and being thoughtful about that. We don't take that for granted, but we've got to find the right way to engage in that conversation and continue to have that discussion. And the relative tax increase over time. So where we've been and where this board and the community has, yes, supported schools significantly, but also has been judicious in those tax increases, and they've been incremental over a long period of time, but this is not a district that has gone out with very, very large hefty tax increases. Those are subjective terms that I'm careful in using because any increase is a burden on people, on households, on human beings. I understand that. We want to make sure that we're showing, though, that there's been fiscal discipline for a very long time, and that's always been what we've been focused on. What we will do now, we'll continue to monitor our budget tax rule projections, analyze our assumptions that we've made in the preliminary budget. In other words, do those assumptions make sense? Have costs gone up or gone down since that point? Where can we make reductions? We'll keep collaborating with our building principals and department managers to assess opportunities for more efficiency, which is a cornerstone of the conversation, evaluate the impact of any of the cost reduction strategies, so making sure that we're not impacting program and that work. We'll evaluate the use of the short-term federal dollars that I mentioned to you, fund balance, reserves, short-term financing strategies, knowing the impact that they will have on the long term, and continue to advocate for equitable funding, mandate relief. We're still having conversations with our legislators. Although we're at 80%, we are still talking about, well, what will come next? And specific aid categories that we want to make sure are protected or increased. The budget is not settled yet, it's a very amicable situation, I'll be right now, but we are still a part of a conversation in saying, do you realize how this might impact or this might impact us? And we need to make sure we continue to be a part of that conversation and, as always, looking for mandate relief as well. The next step for us will be March 16, Community Budget Forum. Dan, that's 7:00 PM, correct? 7:00 PM here in this room as well. So we would welcome participation in that for any community members that can be a part of that conversation. Also, the presentation is very similar to what I shared tonight. We go through the feedback also from the community in a little bit more depth, but really leave a lot of time for conversation and feedback from community members as to what they're thinking. And then on March 22, we'll be making the executive budget proposal at that point, so it's coming very quickly. Any questions from the board? Thank you, and as always, thanks to Lou for his work in getting us there, getting us to a great place. Much appreciated.
And let me just say, on behalf of all of us, thank you to Lou and your team and everybody who's been part of this. We know how challenging it is from year to year, and I think that, given the circumstances in the world in the last couple of weeks, it's going to have impact on our budget as well, and probably hasn't even been factored in yet. So I think we just need to be patient and do the best that we can do, but we appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. Much appreciated.
Principal reports. Danielle, would you like to go first?
I know. I thought that might be the case.
I don't know how I could follow up that presentation, though, so.
I'm fairly sure you can.
Just show us a couple pictures and we'll be good.
Hello, Danielle. Thanks for pointing that out.
That presentation allows you to do good.
Oh, nice, Tom.
You're right. Thank you for saving me.
You can go second.
Very thoughtful, Tom.
My presentation is actually quite short, not because there weren't great things
My presentation is actually quite short, not because there weren't great things happening, but it was actually a short month. So I think we packed a bit into a short period of time. We started our month, I believe it was February 3rd, where we celebrated World Hijab Day. And you can see some pictures of our students celebrating. Some of the boys either wore stickers or pins. And lots of the girls and staff members also done the hijab to show their support and learned a little bit about the perceptions of women wearing the hijab and why it was important and valuable to them. So it was a great celebratory day to learn about different cultures. Kind of on the complete other end of the spectrum, Mrs. Hibbert, her favorite book to read every single year is Beowulf. I'm sure as parents that you remember your children reading Beowulf. But as part of that unit that she does with her students, she brings in a professor from Brockport to share some great information about Anglo-Saxon history from the language to the art and culture. And I was, I just sat there, I was amazed at all the information that he was able to share with the students and make connections to the text and read it in the authentic language. The kids were really enthusiastic about him being there. So always nice to have outsiders come in and share some extra knowledge with us. We had our activity nights for 7th and 8th grades. 6th grade was canceled because of our snow day, our remote learning day. And they are very, very, very upset about it. So I think every single day I get asked a question about when it's being rescheduled. But we have new activity nights coming up in March. So it will be a good time for them. We had great attendance at the 7th grade and a little less than stellar attendance at the 8th grade. But there was a good turnout and lots of groups hanging out with each other and enjoying the evening. I can't say enough about what the PTA does to put this on. It is seamless. They think through every single detail so that it runs like a well-oiled machine. And the kids really enjoy themselves, tons of parent support as well. New this year, we had a guess the grown-up contest and the students really had a ton of fun with us throughout the month of February. Mrs. West kind of spearheaded this, but she gathered pictures of all of the staff members from their middle school years and then posted them each day. And each homeroom had to enter their guesses of who the, you know, the corresponding staff member was. And Mrs. Newcomer's homeroom won, so they won a donut party. But great participation, just about every homeroom participated in it. And we certainly had a lot of laughs. And you could see, you know, some of them are named there, but I think this one is definitely Mrs. Mashewski. I think this is Mrs. Newcomer. Some of them were really, really easy to find out and some of them were a lot more difficult, but lots of fun. And then we had our Black History Month, A through Z Scavenger Hunt. So you can see some posters that were hanging throughout the building. We had 26 of them where students were able to go around the building and learn about 26 influential African-Americans. There were artists, there were writers or authors, physicians, you name it, from all aspects of culture. And we had 150 students participate in the scavenger hunt. They entered all of their their findings. What they were asked to do on their scavenger hunt submission form was do a used to know and now I know or a used to think and now I think. So they were able to identify their new learning as a result of the scavenger hunt. And then they also had to connect a certain number of figures with the Brighton Beliefs characteristics. So they made that connection with their learning. So my favorite part about this was just seeing the kids in the hallway. They came out of different classes, they came out of win. And you could see, I mean, they just plopped down in the hallway, read the materials and filled out their forms and had so much to share with me as I was talking to them. So it's the first time we've done that at the middle school and it was really, really well received. So I'm hopeful to continue activities like this. And then really the last thing that I have is that we celebrated Counselor Appreciation Week. And as as you know, coming back from COVID has offered many difficulties for many students and staff alike. And we would not have been able to navigate any of this and will not be able to navigate any of this without our mental health staff. And we just couldn't say enough about how they're really like shouldering everything and have been for the past few years. So they all have smiles on their faces there, but the the work is grueling day in and day out. And I couldn't ask for a better team to do it with. They couldn't ask for a better team to do it with. They really enjoy being with each other and supporting each other. So we are super fortunate to have them in our district. March is a big month. No, no days off in March, but we've got lots going on. Obviously, it's music in our month, our music in our schools month. We've got a concert going on right now. There was a concert on Monday night, the chorus concert was last night. Last week, we had our District Strings Concert. We're preparing for our DC trip, which is next week. So we are taking five buses down to DC, super excited. We had Festival of Ideas on Saturday, which was very well attended. As Ms. Jeffries and I launched it in the auditorium, there wasn't an empty seat. So it was really nice to see the participation and lots of cookie baking or cookie decorating and cake decorating. So it was fun. The kids brought pictures to show me on Monday. We have our book fair going on right now from a local vendor and from Pittsburgh. So that's really nice to see the diversity of texts that they have available for students. And I told you about the DC trip and our activity nights are coming on. And then modified spring sports have actually been pushed back a week. So they actually won't start until April. And at the very end of our month, we start state testing season.
Thank you. Oh, thank you. You've done my job for me. Sorry, Tom.
Thank you, Mrs. Edmonds. Good evening. I hope everyone's doing well. Really, we've been up to a lot. And as Mrs. Edmonds just mentioned, February really came and went so quickly, but we managed to fit in quite a bit. And really to kick it off, as you enter FRES right now, we have this amazing Black History Month bulletin board that was put together by a few parents, Crystal Ellis, Caitlin LaGro and Tamika Wegstaff. All gave their time, were in the building. And when you, for the first few weeks that it was up, kids are walking by, they're really noticing. And it's just great to have this installation in the building. When we did have snow a few weeks ago, our classes got out and they're having a lot of fun out there. But some other classes, like our 4th graders and Ms. Luckenby's class, went outside and made some snow people and then connected it in a really nice way, like so many of our teachers do, to a writing activity right in the classroom, complete with some hot cocoa, which I made a special stop for. But just really great learning in the moment, connecting it, making learning visible for students, something that happens daily. But it was really great to catch this while they were out there. For Black History Month, we are actually still in celebration. We are continuing through this week where we'll actually have our walkthrough of something I'm going to get to in just a moment. But earlier in February, we were able to spend some time via Zoom with Mr. Evans. And he so graciously donated a really large amount of his time to our students. And yes, he shared about his background, his ability to overcome obstacles within his life, his own goals, how he became the mayor of the city of Rochester. But then he dedicated a really large amount of time to our students in just letting them ask questions. So our assistant principal, Ms. O'Neil, and myself kind of managed the chat and helped to get as many classrooms heard as we could. And he took questions about everything and anything and really taught our students a lot about our area. They had different questions about the actual city of Rochester, about High Falls, about all sorts of things. And his knowledge and depth of knowledge about our area really showed. So it was wonderful and our students really enjoyed the experience. We also had done vignettes each morning on our announcements of different changemakers and just exposing our students to different African-American innovators and people who've really propelled our our world further through their inventions, through working in medicine and all sorts of different areas. So that was also nice to go through together. Now, all around FRES right now, if you're able to stop by, please do. We have our changemaker presentations where each class was just asked, we've kind of compiled a list over time, where homerooms could choose, there was someone that they were particularly interested in learning about as a changemaker or if the class had their own suggestion to add to the list, they were able to do that. But you can see there's an actual 3D example of Amanda Gorman, where she's actually looks to be standing in the hallway. And students, as they learned about these folks, were able to add the tidbits of information all around. So we have everyone from Louis Armstrong, Muhammad Ali, Toni Morrison, as I mentioned, Amanda Gorman. But most importantly, oh, we even, I mean, I could have gone for slides and slides. I could rival Tom with my slides with however many changemakers we have. But you can see the classes really made each one their own. And the most special, I'd argue, out of any of them, one of our 3rd grade classes chose their changemaker to be Mr. Henry, who is Henry Westbrook's, who is our school's security guard. And he's, he's one of the people that just makes French Road, French Road, hands down. He's there every day when you come in, he's there every afternoon when you leave. And he's an installation in the sense that he connects with our students one-on-one. Some of our students who just have a tougher time engaging in school for whatever reason, really connect with him. They request time with him, they work to earn time with him, and he always makes himself available. And so it's just a real pleasure to work with him. And Mrs. Moulton's class chose him as their changemaker. They interviewed him. So he came into the class and they had several questions prepared. They wanted to know about his life. Mr. Westbrook's mom is actually an activist and has shared her story with, I believe, Brighton High School and many other schools around. And they put their bulletin board together. And actually, it's hard to see, but they have like a little area where you can walk by and add your own feedback about Mr. Henry and how you've connected with him in the building as well, in addition to just different ways that the kids have connected with him in their day-to-day at French Road. So super special and so well deserved. We've had some really exciting PE collaboration that I've taken part in over the last few weeks too. Our students took part in a series of classes around drumming, which is the middle photo, where they're able to follow along with a video and learn some basic drumming concepts. And then that really flows into them kind of coming up with their own rhythms, following a leader, sharing that within a group. And our, our physical education teacher, Mr. Goodwill, also led students in an exploration of breakdancing, which was really interesting, just something really different. And it just so happened, there was a lesson that he couldn't be there. He made these amazing videos that I felt like I was watching, like subscribing to something on YouTube. I felt like I was really learning something. And the students were so engaged in following along and really able to have some moves by the end of the unit. So it was just something a little bit non-traditional, but awesome that our kids engaged in that. We are the lucky recipients of many Promethean boards. And so we just installed 11. So thanks to our wonderful tech folks who worked really hard over and after the February break to make this happen. This one here is on a stand in a classroom and it just adds a little 21st, 22nd century spin on a smartboard where more than one hand can touch it at a time. It has a lot more applications that are a little bit more innovative and kind of catching up to where our students and teachers are in the classroom. So our, our staff are absolutely loving them and are really excited to dive into some PE. I wanted to highlight these two students. They are sisters, if you, if you did not notice. But Caitlin and Lorelei Love were two participants in our Health Move Minds fundraiser. So students, over the course of the month of February, worked to raise money. I had presented last month on how all of those donations were going to go to Pencils and Paper, a local group benefiting students in the Rochester City School District. And so these two students decided that they were going to bake pretzels and take orders and tally the money at the end. And so low and behold, right before the break, their family reached out and wanted to share, you know, we started counting this money. And they actually raised $860 on their own. And I just touched base with Ms. Forsyth this week. And they aren't, all of our donations aren't fully in, we're just rounding up the last of it. But we're going to be just around $15,000 where we're going to be able to partner with Pencils and Paper. Our own PE department benefits from that. Some really wonderful organizations benefit. And our students and families and community are amazing because they're making the donations. So amazing work to those folks. And here's some pictures from our Celebration Week, where students had a whole variety of activities that they could engage in in celebration for all their hard work and fundraising. So they had a blast with that. As Danielle mentioned, it is Music in Our Schools Month. So we have several concerts, but I'd be remiss if I did not include bingo. We are on our second round of bingo. So March 9th and 10th, we have our 3rd graders getting a chance at bingo this go-around. We have our PTA meeting with the principals that I'll be partnering with Matt Tappin for as we talk about our DEI work over the course of the year on the 14th. And then we will have our 4th grade band concert on the 15th at 7:00 PM. We'll get to break in our brand-new seating for ourselves. I think the middle school had an event earlier this week where they were able to utilize those, so I'm excited. On the 16th, we have 4th grade strings, once again at 7 o'clock at French Road. And then toward the end of the month, we have some really exciting things. The French Road Science and Social Studies Fair will be back up in action again from 7 to 8. And I do need to mention that our main office secretary, Maureen Wedgwood, is instrumental in the organization and the work behind the scenes for that event. So I'm so thankful to her and her help in providing this to our students. And then on the 29th, also, we have our FRES Summer Activities Fair. So we'll be featuring a lot of local organizations and have that available for families.
Any questions?
I have a question. Will roller skating make a comeback, do you think? Or are we going to stick with bingo?
I would love to revisit that discussion in the 22, 23 school year, Mrs. Hatch. Really honestly, our students have been beyond thrilled with the idea of winning a prize and they get a snack. It's really enjoyable. And are, they're coming out with all of their fingers, no. I think roller skating is something we'd be open to talking about again. We'll have to see what our PTA is interested in partnering with us on.
Inquiring minds want to know.
Thanks.
There are many more saved appendages this week. Bingo is far less risky.
I just wanted to say that I had the pleasure of visiting FRES last week and to walk the halls of all the installations for Black History Month. And I want to commend you, it was just lovely to see all of the the joy in the halls. So thank you for that.
Oh, absolutely. Thanks for being there. Thank you. Thanks, Moran. Okay, Dr. Hall.
All right, yes, Home of the Bruins and your monthly update. We are in the process. We've gone through a few different renditions with Mr. Merritt about the Bruin. And that, I hope next month I'll be able to show you a few pictures of what the actual mascot will look like with production. We hope to have him by, or them, them, the Bruin, by homecoming in the fall. It's unbelievable how much, how long this takes, so.
It's been hard to get a custom fit for you, isn't it? You got to get the measurements in and.
It expands, it will fit the large and small and medium.
You're going to be so great.
It'll fit everyone. And it is them, it'll be a non-gender-specific Bruin. So we're looking forward to that, but more to come. Hopefully I'll have some pictures of that next, next time. So similar to, you know, you'll hear from all the other buildings with Black History Month and Martin Luther King holiday in January, we didn't get to do our traditional assembly because that's right when COVID was really, the COVID cases were high. So we moved everything to February and Black History Month. And our BSU traditionally has always overseen, our students have a lot of input, which they should, especially at the high school level, to plan the assembly, what we're going to do for Black History Month, as well as Martin Luther King and celebrating him and his legacy. So this year, our BSU attended a conference at RIT. And they also attended the Rock Rochester Change for on Race and Equity. And one of the presentations they had was from the Wamba Group. It's an African drumming and dance group, actually based out of Webster. And they performed at RIT, the kids loved them, so they brought them to Brighton High School. And we had our first assembly in, I don't know, I guess over almost two years in the gym for our seniors and all of our BSU and our Culture Climate Leadership Team students. And they performed. It was quite incredible, very interactive. And Sean Nelms, there was a guest speaker, Sean Nelms, who's the superintendent of East High School. He presented a wonderful message about Martin Luther King legacy and the work that Brighton's been doing and from his vantage point as being the East High Superintendent, that, you know, some of the work that goes on is difficult at times. And we need to challenge ourselves to stand up and just do what is right. And had a wonderful message. And then the dancing and the drumming was appreciated by the students. It was really a nice assembly. It's just great to finally be back, even though at that time we were all still wearing masks. Just nice to be in a space together to do a celebration. So it was wonderful. As part of that as well, Howard Dennis, our school librarian, brought in the book, Stony the Rook. the Road. Famous historian, author, you've seen him on NPR, CNN, being interviewed for various stories, but Henry Louis Gates wrote Stony the Road. And I'll just read the quote, "A profound new rendering of the struggle by African-Americans for equality after the Civil War and the violent counter-revolution that resubjugated them is, as seen through the prism of the war of images and ideas that have left an enduring racist stain on the American mind." So Howard read this book himself, and he brought this to the book club. Thanks to the board, we reestablished our book club from being cut a few years ago. So that's back in action. They chose this book. We sat with BSU members and other students, we're invited from around the school, and we'll have a book read. First meeting will be at the beginning of April. So Howard, Thylis, who's one of, Thylis Dorsey-Patros, one of the BSU advisors, Eamon Loy, myself, BSU students, book club students, and other faculty and students from the high school, all being provided this book to read, and I'm really looking forward to the discussion. Started over February break, and it's pretty profound, and I prefer nonfiction, and, you know, there's the way that he tells the story. It's not just a history book, it's just stories told through his eyes, but viewing and doing all the research that he did. So, quite amazing and look forward to a great discussion from Henry Louis Gates and Stony the Road. So, our CCLT, so we've been having a pretty active meeting. We have subgroups that are meeting, and then when we have our large group meetings, our Culture Climate Leadership Team, made up of, again, students from various clubs and organizations from the school, Student Council. They actually are Subcommittee on Sexual Misconduct, Sexual Education and Misconduct and Education Committee, asked Mr. Allen, who's one of our physics teachers, to come in and talk about women in STEM, science, tech, and engineering and math. And I didn't understand what Mr. Allen actually did in some of his AP Physics C classes, but every year during the PSAT, he would present his research and his study through the College Board on women in science and why some of the stereotypes of women in science or math and engineering fields is bogus. And had a discussion, there's a video as a part of it, and gave a lot of information about unconscious bias. And our students on the misconduct committee wanted him to come and speak, so everybody could hear it. And we're actually talking about where that message and about unconscious bias, but especially when it comes to gender. Talk about it a lot with race, which we should, but with gender stereotypes, where we might be able to infuse that with even our 9th graders coming in, and especially with our women and our females and our girls in school, that, you know, these fields are open to you as well. And, you know, to the biases that I think culturally we have been a part of since we were kids. The research that he shared is, shows that that's, again, bogus and not a fact, which I think all of us here would agree, but there's still a lot of stereotypes. So, it was a great discussion, and that was just before February break. And I just want to thank Mr. Allen again for giving up the time. Lot of questions, he spent over an hour with us, a great afternoon. Of course, you can see our Board of Ed. You don't get to celebrate it in that one month or that one time a year. You, I think, almost everybody was there that day for the presentation with our, it's the annual Student Council Board of Ed meeting. I'm not sure what other, how many other schools do this, but took some pictures from the back, full Student Council, questions, Q and A. I thought it was one of the better ones that I've seen, where everybody got to share insights, and I think the students really left feeling more appreciation for what you do, especially in the last couple of years with COVID, and, you know, the push for, you know, politically with, you know, that's out there in terms of critical race theory and banning books, and all the things that you have to deal with as a board, and how you handle those sort of concerns and questions from the community, when we are a diverse community. And the students were pretty happy with it. So thank you again for giving up that time and coming to meet with us. So International Club, we have an international club made up of students from all over the world, plus other students who are just want to be part of the International Club. For the support of Ukraine, along with our Student Council, they put together a ribbon sharing just to support our fellow members in Ukraine. We have a lot of students from Ukraine and Russia. And one of the days just last week, gave out ribbons, I actually have one right here, a yellow and blue ribbon, to wear, and students were handing them out in the morning. And maybe some of you don't know, we have a custodian who was in Ukraine at the time that the war broke out. He was there for his father, who passed away, knew, you know, there was a lot of tensions going on, but the war started, he was right in the middle of it all. He managed to escape to Poland and get out fairly, you know, maybe within three or four days of the conflict beginning, the war, and made it to Germany and just landed in Rochester tonight. So hopefully he'll be back with us before the end of the week. But there was a lot of outpouring. One of the other custodians put together a bunch of letters, and we were giving him those cards, and there was a little brochure signed. But really glad to have Vasily Filik back with us, starting hopefully next week. And everybody knows him, great, wonderful person. Student Council also researched a lot of places where students or faculty could donate, and we're looking to donate to the United Nations Fund for Refugees. Most, well, all of the money will go towards refugees, but also from Ukraine and Afghanistan and other areas of the world. So that's what we're promoting with Student Council, and I want to thank them for that. Say yes to the dress. Again, a wonderful experience, we didn't get to do it last year, and I think a lot of people missed it. We have ball and prom plans, again, coming up this year. Tons of clothing, sewing being done, dresses being hemmed. I don't know anything about that, but that's what I was told they were doing, to fit the sizes of everybody. Shoes galore, Colleen was in her heyday just looking, she didn't take but saw them. And so many different clothing for men and women to take. And just want to thank Julian Gilbert and Andreas Castanza for really heading that up with our two counselors, Carrie and Courtney, and then Julie Keston from Jewish Family Services and Brighton Your Wardrobe. So, an amazing event, and I think it's pretty unique to Brighton, which, like many things are. So thank you again for that. We missed it. Farewell to a wonderful friend, not only for the high school but K-12, with Christopher Schneider leaving, he's going to the U of R. He's been a longstanding, our technical director and mentor for all of these students you see there. They were, they did this wonderful painting for him, a board that he's going to hang right up in his office at home. And he's going to the U of R to become their technical director. Huge promotion for him, and it's a big loss for us, but we're excited. He spent Friday with the kids, pizza dinner, and just kind of rehashing memories and just a lot of fun. Just, Chris, if you're listening, I hope you're not, but if you are, we're going to miss you. Our food drive started today, tomorrow, Wednesday, as part of Brighton Believes and the Brighton Day of Caring, as we move through this week. All the food is going to the Brighton Food Cupboard, and we've talked about with prices increasing, inflation, the grocery store, things costing so much more, this is probably more important than ever right now, just ask anybody that can can donate, and thank you for that. We've had a lot of donations brought in by kids and staff today. And just, this wasn't in your presentation, but I was going around, actually this was today, just seeing the kids now, that masks, there's no mandate, but certainly we have kids, as you'll see, wearing masks, kids who are not. But kids back in the hallways with the high tops, eating, having lunch, sitting in the hallways, two masks, one on a mask, had a mask, eating, talking, getting away from some of the other bigger areas. We had our taco in a bag, or as they say, the walking taco now, that you can eat, that was in our lunchroom. Student eating some chips in a classroom, getting help during flex. The tables are back out in front of the library, student who's masked, somebody who's not, talking and conversing. Our group, who are freshmen, back in this hallway, they're back, they'd like to be back there again. And just, you know, it's nice to kind of have some sense of normalcy. So it's, so far, so good. Program planning continues, our Bruin March Madness, which hopefully you'll talk about at some point in the future, but the executive student council is planning like a homecoming, almost excitement at the end of March. We really need to just get together and have some fun, and I think it's going to be a great, fun week of activities and themes, and a pep rally on Thursday night. You're all welcome to attend. Lots of events coming up, you can take a look. We have Akabilusa this Saturday, and then a big choir performance on Monday, and all sorts of other things coming up in the month ahead. Any questions?
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you so much again for all of your support.
Oh, my pleasure. When we see all these reports, we just know that all the work is worth it, because it's just amazing to see what's happening in each building. It's really very, very rewarding for me, and I think for everybody.
No, it does feel good. I mean, this was.
It does, it feels great.
This was fun. And Matt, I pulled up yours, you're next.
Thanks of you, Dr. Hall. I didn't include all the pictures of kids eating the walking taco, but that did happen at Council Rock today as well. So, this entire month of March, we are celebrating Mindful March. Our counselors have put together a calendar that was shared with teachers, but also at home, to give kids just some ideas on how to be mindful. And here are just a couple pictures. They're both in Mrs. Allen's first grade class, our counselor happened to be in there for both of them. The first one, the kids are looking out the window and identifying something beautiful to them outside. And the second is they are melting like ice cream cones with a breathing exercise. So, we're doing something every day to talk about how to be mindful, how to connect the mind and body, and just continuing to focus on that social, emotional learning. Like the other buildings, we did celebrate Black History Month. Our library put together an amazing collection of books, and then our librarian, Adele Mozkovic, has shared those books throughout the month. And then, in a special, so Jerdean Nolan is an African-American author. She's written several books, and I did a read-alout of this one called Backyard Campout, and it's a chapter book. Four chapters, we did, shared one a week, and then we gave teachers activities that they could do with them to connect with them. Here's a big secret. I hope Adele Mozkovic just isn't listening, because she's going to be mad. The reason we chose this author, I'm whispering like she's here.
You have a microphone for any two.
Is because, I know, is because she's going to be our guest author in May. So we wanted to get the kids to get excited, a little preview. Really focusing on her experience, her experience as an African-American writer, and so we really wanted to get that excitement going, even though they don't know it yet. So, don't tell if you've got kids at Council Rock. So, it was a really great month, and the kids really enjoyed, enjoyed the activities that went along with the book. Like in many of the other buildings, PTSA is so good to us. Our PTSA does something unique at Council Rock. They throw us a Super Bowl Monday, so it's the Monday after Super Bowl. There are like 20 different soups and chilies, bread, desserts, and it just allows our teachers to stay up late and not have to pack, pack a meal for the next day. It is so great, it smells so good, and they did not disappoint this year. Again, we weren't able to do it last year because of COVID, so they went big, and it was really, really appreciated, so. Music in our Schools Month this March. This is a picture of several, actually several classes that had, in Mrs. Davis's music class, she's been studying different orchestral instruments through Peter and the Wolf. And then we have this mom, who's Mrs. Julia Gray, mom to Micah. She's a substitute for the RPO, performs regularly with Buffalo Philharmonic, and teaches at Hobart. She came in to demonstrate the violin and have them see it live and in person. So, all kinds of great celebrations. They also, as the two music teachers, had everyone in the school fill out Music Is, and we have a huge mural of what music means to us as staff, but also as the kids, to remind them about how important music is in our lives. And then last month, I talked about all the great writing that our first graders were doing, about Arctic animals and research. And then, this was just a unique opportunity for two first grade classes, Mrs. Genzel's first grade class and Mrs. Ayello's first grade class, to share in person what they have learned. They all created something, and then they were available, and they invited a lot of the staff members to be able to come through, and kids were able to teach us about the facts that they learned and share with us their final product. And it just was a great example of kids being able to articulate, communicate, and share what they've learned and connect it all. So we've got some events coming up. Brighton Believes Day is tomorrow. Again, thanks to our PTSA volunteers who put together amazing packages for our teachers to be able to do so all throughout the day tomorrow. Our kids will be engaging in that, and I'll have tons of pictures and more for the report in April. As Marin said, we will be teaming up to have a combined French Road and Council Rock DEI work update next Monday. And then we have an added meeting with the principal that is Bavona Parent Training. So, we've always done personal body safety lessons through our counselors. But to join in with what the rest of the district is looking at with Bavona kind of leading the charge, Bavona is going to come in and do that training, K1 and 2. And a key part of that is really working with parents. So we have a night, it's the next night, Tuesday, the 15th, where that will be taped as well, that we'll share it out, but it just shares what the content of the lesson is, because I know that that is a lot of questions for people with kindergarten, first and second graders, what does that look like? But also to let parents know what, what's, information is going to be shared with their kids and with their children, as the kids will come home and hopefully be talking about what those lessons are with their parents. That's what we're hoping and encouraging. And then, coming up, I recognize it's before our next PTSA meeting, we are so excited to be having our Ice Cream Social and Open Houses back. So, we hope to see lots of people there, but we've got a kindergarten, a first grade, and a second grade night. Ice cream will be scooped in the cafeteria, we'll have lots of space and lots of room, lots of time to explore, there will be dancing. We're not sure yet whether it will be inside or outside, it will kind of all depend on the weather. Originally, before we had the mask mandates lifted, we were thinking they would dance outside, but now we're thinking maybe they might be able to do in the gym. We'll see what it looks like and see what the weather looks like. But we're just so excited. The Book Fair will also be taking place all these nights to try to encourage parents to be able to come in and look through that as another station within the Ice Cream Social. So, we're really excited about what spring has to offer. We're really excited about all the end-of-the-year events that are, you know, coming into shape now as well with things shifting, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Matt.
Absolutely.
Any questions for Matt? Next, we're going to move to reports, and our first report is our financial report, and we all received that in advance. It's also available online, if anybody else in the community wants to look at it. Are there any questions for Lou? Anything else you wanted to share, Lou? You're good? Okay. Then, could I have a motion to approve the financial report?
Promoted.
Sue. Second by Esther? Christina. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Next, Lila. I think you have lots to share with us today.
Okay, so, actually not much to report on today. I feel like I was just here, but, so, winter sports have pretty much come to a close. Brighton had numerous athletes go to their state meets, so that was really exciting for everyone, some notable performances. Ben Cuomo, he won his Giant Slalom Ski Race. Then the girls' Alpine team finished second in their race overall, and Brent Girls Nordic Team also won their states, and Kate Anzalati individually won her Nordic states. I also know we have a couple students attending track and field nationals in New York City this weekend, so that's really cool for them as well. So then, with the wrapping up of winter sports, spring sports are coming full swing, I think, next week. Then Model United Nations also has a conference this weekend, and it's the Rochester-wide conference known as UNAR. Everyone always does a lot of fun at UNAR, so we're really glad that the conference can be back in person this year. Another event that's back in person is the Natural Helpers Retreat. So Natural Helpers is like a peer-helping program to like strengthen communication and provide support to others in the school and community. The members of Natural Helpers are nominated by fellow students, and then, so, they go on a retreat together in the Finger Lakes, which is normally in the fall, but now it's in the spring because the fall was, we were unsure about what could happen, I guess. So I know everyone in Natural Helpers is really excited that they could have a retreat this year again, and after not having one last year, and they all have a lot of fun on this retreat. So, then as Dr. Hall said, Exec is working hard right now, we're planning our March Madness week, so we're using some input from the Senior Class Council as well, so we're going to make it like sort of a fundraising event for them, too, so that's exciting. It's going to be some pieing of teachers, I've heard. I don't know, that's news to me today, but we'll see. News to me today, but we'll see. So then this week will take place the week of the 21st. Each day is going to have a theme, kind of like homecoming, and then the grades are going to be like, it's going to be a competition, and they're going to, we're going to see who dresses up best for the theme, I guess. Then Friends of Rachel is planning a roller skating activity midweek after school, so that'll be really fun. And then to end off the week, we're holding another pep rally, so it's going to like mirror the fall pep rally. So then that will just be a nice way to lift school spirit, and I think everyone I've talked to is excited about it. So maybe that's what they're telling me, but I think it'll be really fun. So then lastly, the change to the mask, the change in masking seems to be going really well. It's still a little bit weird because it's just so different for everyone. Overall, everyone I've talked to though seems like they're really comfortable regardless if they're choosing to wear a mask or not. So that's really big. So yeah, that's it for tonight. So thank you all for having me here.
Well, thank you, and we all want to thank you for having us be your guests at school last week. We all really enjoyed it. You just did a great job. It was probably the best that we've attended so far. We really appreciated getting your questions in advance. Thank you and thank you.
Got a lot out of it too, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to add anything? No? We all had a good time. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Board of Education reports, and the first one is Labor Relations. Do you have a new report?
I think so. From the last one, I think we recorded last.
Okay. Information Exchange. They're actually meeting tomorrow. And the topic of the meeting is communicating with your community. And a couple of different Dan Goldmans from other districts will be presenting to the group. This is true. Dan Goldman wannabes.
They call them their aspiring Dan Goldman.
They're right. So that's tomorrow. Legislative?
Yes, we met last week, talking about spring appointments with our legislators. And then also just reflecting on Foundation Aid, how folks are definitely moving towards 100%. We still feel the fact in many districts that we're not quite at 100%. And then also talked about the fact that that will be a huge accomplishment to get there, but that also, that the formula created in what, 2007 now, doesn't reflect what our communities actually look like today. So that work is far from over. You know, first we get to 100%, and then we talk about making the formula reflect needs that are actually on the ground in districts today.
We have a BOCES report from Mark Kokanovich, and their, BOCES 1 is continuing to review their Monroe 1 budgets and policies. And the most exciting thing, I think, in his report was that WAM 13 aired a segment on February 17th highlighting the Construction Trades Program at BOCES 1 and the EMCC Program. So I thought that was really cool that they got that kind of recognition. It's well deserved. Are there other board member reports? Christina, do you have anything?
No, not since the last time.
Esther?
Karen and I attended the Curriculum Council meeting. Do you want to elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure. We got to go to Council Rock. I love going to Council Rock. I'm sorry, friends, I think it might be my favorite building. Anyway, we were there to see what habits of mind look like in action, right? Like physically looks like in the classrooms and talk to folks who are using it every day as they teach, as we begin to explore what that might look like at other buildings.
Sue?
Nothing to report, but I love all the buildings equally. Put the mask back on.
Andrea?
No, other than the Say Yes to the Dress wasn't great success. 120 dresses that we, dresses, suits, jackets, ties, jewelry, pumps, and different bags. So it was a great success.
A fabulous pair of Lucite high heels walked right out the door. I'm not sure how, I'm not sure how long she was able to keep them on, but she was so happy. They were fabulous.
You know, for coming back after it was a successful year, we're real happy.
Yep. Peter Wegman, PTSA report?
Yeah. Not a lot to report. So the PTSA has had a great presentation from Dr. Whitney Rapp. The lecture will be posted through the end of March on the PTSA YouTube channel. We are planning a spiritware sale in March. However, there's been a slight delay due to availability of items, but stay tuned. The Nancy F. Beck Memorial Fund met this month. It is the 25th year since the fund was established. Fund generously funded all grants for just over $25,000 to celebrate the anniversary. We thank Mr. Beck for his help bringing smiles to all of Brighton. Nominations will be open soon for PTSA leadership positions. Please consider nominating someone. And plans are still moving forward for many events in the coming months. That's it.
Dr. McGowan?
Just a few quick comments. One, a thanks to our staff members who are reaching out very much on the individual level and in each building to support and assist families impacted by the war in Ukraine. And recognize that it impacts many different families, Ukrainian and Russian families in many different ways, and trying to make sure we're taking care of all of our community members. And we just encourage people, if they need help, need support in any way, to reach out and let us know. I think Tom's story about our custodian was touching and heartwarming how people have reached out to him. There's a lot of that happening in our community, but where we can help, please let us know for sure. Brighton Believes Day tomorrow, really looking forward to that. It's always such a, just a great event and a great reminder in our community of how we take care of each other and really demonstrate in living color those Brighton beliefs. And I just, again, thanking Jolene and Andrea for what they did around Say Yes to the Dress, another great example of that, and they were a big part of this day, starting the Brighton Beliefs Committee, having this happen years ago, just taking a day to serve others and think very much about how we can impact our community. We appreciate that. And I would agree with Lila, the post-masking, unmasking, really people having the option and choice, I think is a great way to put it, has gone, we think, very well. Those that feel very comfortable with, without a mask have been able to do that, but those that would like to continue to think about their own protection and wearing a mask have, I think, felt comfortable doing that as well. And we're really pleased to see that. That should be somebody's choice at this point, and we're also pleased to know more about the protection that is offered by a KN95 mask for the individual wearing it, regardless of what the other person in that relationship is doing. And so it's gone well, and cases continue to be low. We'll watch those very, very carefully, continue to monitor that. But we really seem to be moving towards a point where we're not forgetting the risk and the danger and what that means for us by any stretch or taking that for granted, but also where we're finding ways to emerge and manage it more endemically as opposed to pandemically, and that's gone well. That's it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the approval of the first reading of the following policies. Policy 6160, it's a personnel policy regarding professional growth and staff development. Policy 8220, it's a career and technical occupational education policy. And Policy 1510, bylaws regarding regular board meetings and rules, quorum and parliamentary procedure decorum. Do I have a motion to approve this, these policies? First reads?
Still moved.
Karen?
Second.
Second. Esther, are there any questions, any discussion, any comments about the policies? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, number nine, number nine on our consent agenda is our Consent Agenda. That includes approval of personnel changes, recommendations from the Committee on Special Ed, fundraising activities, field trip approvals, and additionally, a gift from Jerry Stahl, who's the VHS class of 1957, in the amount of $1,500 to become part of our PTSA hardship grant funding, which assists students facing financial difficulties. Can I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Andrea?
Second.
Second. Sue, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. And finally, does anybody else have any comments? And could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? No?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Meeting adjourned.
This has been a special presentation from the Brighton Central School District Board of Education.